Go. Call the regular commission meeting for April 16th order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a roll call?
Mayor Hines is absent this evening. Is there a motion to excuse Mayor Hines?
I'll make a motion to excuse Mayor Hines.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Vogt?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Short?
Here.
Okay, now's the time for not anybody having announcements for anything other than agenda items. Now's the time to come up.
This is...
I would say, don't they take them at the end?
Yeah, yes, that would be, unless you'd have an event announcement or something like that for right now.
Good evening. Jeff Lang, 95, 86, North State Route 66. Just want to advise the city commission and the city manager that I've made contact with Brian Burkhardt at the street department and asking for the support, once again, for the clean sweep of the Great Miami River, the Powell section from South Sydney to South Pickwa, and Brian is taking care of all of that. I just asked that Mr. Huff notify the police and fire that we'll be out there. It's going to be on July 20th. This will be our 16th year of doing it. You can go to www dot protecting our waterways dot org. There's a tab on the far right for contact. Drop me an email if you want to get involved. And we've done a lot of trash out of the river in 15 years, and we're looking forward to seeing our numbers going down, and we support the city supporting us, so thank you very much.
I think you just announced it to the police and fire, Jeff, so you just take care of it.
Okay, comes up to the consent agenda?
Yes, there are four items on the consent agenda tonight, but first of all, I want to introduce Karen Jenkins, who tonight is on the consent agenda to be appointed by the city commission as clerk of the commission. Karen was hired as the law director administrative assistant and also in serving as clerk of the commission in her capacity with that job. So, the first item tonight is approval of the minutes from March 19, 2019, regular city commission meeting. Item number two is a resolution appointing Karen S. Jenkins as clerk of the commission for the city of Pickwa. Item number three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement to permit the usage of a portion of the bike path waterfront behind the old power plant to Main Street Pickwa. This is for the Down the River event. And item number four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement to permit the usage of Pickwa Veterans Memorial Park to the Pickwa Veterans Association. This is for the Memorial Day event.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Short?
Aye.
Consent agenda has passed. Come up to new business. Ordinance number 2-19, this will be the first reading.
An emergency ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the city of Pickwa.
This ordinance actually allows us to publish in our code of ordinances, the ordinances that have been adopted by the city commission over the past year. These, since these have already been enacted, you may want to consider waiving the three reading rule so that we can go ahead and get these published.
Do we do this more than once a year?
No, I think we generally do it about once a year.
I like the movement that we waive the three reading rule.
I'll second that.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three reading rule has been waived.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2-19.
Second.
Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Short?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Ordinance 2-19 has been passed. Ordinance number 3-19, this will be the first reading.
An ordinance amending chapter 51 of the Pickwa municipal code Sewers.
Mr. Melford will provide the staff report.
Thank you, sir. We had had recommendations from the Ohio EPA due to an EPA industrial pretreatment program audit, and with those recommendations, we went to the EPA for a program modification, and then since they've approved that, we're coming back to you. We've had our legal review, and with those recommendations, we're back to you for your review and a hopeful approval. We have some definition changes or additions. There are some general discharge prohibitions that were added, language about local limits and what we're allowed to do. Let's see, city enforcement procedures were updated. We had industrial discharge permit information inserted into the sewer use ordinance, which is the same language we have in all the industrial pretreatment permits as well. We're just mirroring it and reflecting it here in the sewer use ordinance. Some confidentiality language and records and retention.
I think, Chris, if I'm correct, these are required to mirror the state code requirements, correct?
These came right from the EPA. We essentially copied and pasted what they were asking for and brought it to you, and they'd already approved it at the state level, and our legal has reviewed it as well and approved it.
Do you have any comments from the audience? Any comments from the commission? This will serve as the first reading. Next, number seven, will be resolution number R-43-19.
A resolution affirming the street name Gene Street.
Mr. Smeesing will provide staff report.
Thank you. This is what you might describe as a housekeeping matter as it relates to the original naming intentions for Gene Street. The source of the concern is a discrepancy in the street name for Gene Street as it's shown as Gene Street on the Peters subdivision plat that was originally adopted in 1957 and resulted in the development of the majority of the street length. Subsequently, there was a reference to Gene Drive on the Sunset Acres subdivision plat that was adopted in 1961, which in effect resulted in the construction of the remaining portion of Gene Street. The street name signs posted here are Gene Street, not Gene Drive, and all but, I believe, one of the homes actually front that portion that is referred to as Gene Street on the plat. This was brought to the attention of my office by the 911 communication center when they discovered the discrepancy on the plating, and so they asked for a clarification. So, we did present this to the planning commission. They held a public hearing on the matter, deliberated on the issue, and determined that this is, in effect, a scribbler's error, and they recommend that the Gene Street street name be affirmed as the proper street name for the entire length. I might add, there was no one present at the meeting to speak for or against this item.
Any comments? Go ahead, John.
I move to adopt resolution R-43-19.
I'll second that.
I don't need a roll call on this, do I? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 43-19 has passed. Resolution number R-44-19.
A resolution awarding a contract to Fleet Corps Technologies Operating Company, LLC, DBA Superfleet Mastercard for our citywide fuel purchasing program for the years 7/119 through 6/30/2024.
Ms. Holtzapple?
Thank you. We're requesting commission approval to enter into a five-year contract with Fleet Corps, who does business as Speedway for citywide fuel services, as our current fuel contract ends on June 30th. This bid package was properly distributed and advertised with bids opened on March 28th of this year. Fleet Corps Speedway was the lone bidder at a cost of eight cents over their wholesale cost, or retail minus one cent, whichever is less. For locations other than Speedway, the retail price will be paid. Fleet Corps Speedway has been our fuel provider for several years, and the city continues to be happy with their product quality, customer service, training, and support. Approval is requested tonight to allow ample time for contract review and approval within the timeframe.
Any comments from the audience or the commission?
The Mastercards, they can use, and let's say both Speedways were down. Can they use it somewhere else to get fuel so they're...
No, well, they can use it for other, for fuel only at other locations.
Okay.
Like Marathon, or if they're out of this vicinity, they can use it, but it would be at the retail cost, so they wouldn't be without fuel.
Okay, alright.
With this, we're spending some money, so we need a roll call on this one. We need a motion first, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion on the...
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Short?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye. Resolution 44-19 has passed. Resolution number 45-19.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Finley Fire Equipment for the purchase of a fire engine for the fire department.
I'll call on Chief Paul Snyder.
Thank you. The fire department had in their capital budget for this year the replacement of our 1985 engine. It's Engine Six, as known to our staff and most throughout our dispatch community in that. When we had the budget approved, we put together a vehicle research committee. We visited with that committee many vendors and station visits to see what those products were that were in service, and the committee came back to me and reported that they recommend the Pierce Impel Pumper, which in their evaluations had many more safety features, better stopping distance, better history of reliability, and with those items in the evaluation, this should be excellent for our community for many years to come. With the approval from commission tonight, if that's accepted, we plan to remove Engine Six from our inventory, and we would put that out for bid through GovDeals or some other entity to bring some money back into the city. We would also take our Engine Ten, which is a 1992 engine, and we would remove that from our fleet with the intent of bolstering our safety service and training center out at the old water plant and use that for many trainings and that that we anticipate out there. So, with that, we would reduce our fleet number total for the engines down to three. Our newest engine that we have currently in the fleet is a 2009 model, and with some of the personal experience and history we have, we have a similar model to that that was manufactured by the Pierce Manufacturing Company, the 2009 model that we have, and that's been stellar for us with very little downtime, reliability, very little issues with maintenance, very rugged in its design, and has performed admirably for the city in emergency scenes that we've had. So, that was another source of information that we had through the committee that was given to us.
Any questions?
You said that's going to take you down to three?
Yes, we currently have four in our fleet, but with the reliability that we have with that 2009 model that we've had with very little downtime and doing routine, keeping up with the maintenance and that, we feel that that will be for the number of runs that we handle, type of calls that we do, and we're also going to bolster this with some vehicle extrication equipment on it as well, so we're increasing the versatility with that, so we'll be able to have more of a force multiplication on types of calls that we do with this engine.
When will you need another one, you think?
The next one that we're looking at is a 19, or the one that we have is a 1997, so I'm thinking another 10 years plus before we would probably evaluate for that engine.
Any questions, audience, commission anymore?
I move to adopt resolution R-44, or 45-19.
I'll second it.
Going to have to have a roll call, we're spending a lot of money here.
It's a lot.
Seriously, we want some roll call? Okay, Commissioner Short?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye. Resolution 45-19 has passed. Resolution R-46-19.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to sign the program year 2019 CHIP Program Partnership Agreement by and between the Miami County Board of Commissioners, the city of Pickwa, the city of Tip City, and the city of Troy for the Ohio Development Services Agency Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program.
Ms. Ranely will provide the staff report.
Thank you. So, this resolution will allow the city of Pickwa to once again enter into a partnership agreement with Miami County to apply for the program year 2019 Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program. The application is due May 3rd. The partnership will apply for $650,000 total program dollars, with $276,000 being dedicated to Pickwa-specific projects focusing on private owner rehabilitation and repair projects. We should find out in the fall if we have been funded, and we will start administering the new grant cycle in January of 2020.
Any comments from the audience on this at all? Commission?
Yeah, do we have CHIP money left right now from, what, two years, two years ago?
We're currently in the 2017 program cycle, which runs through October. We are low on funds now, so we are working on our, kind of our last projects right now.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I can entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second it.
Have a roll call on this one?
Certainly. Commissioner Short?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Resolution 46-19 has passed. Next is resolution 47-19.
A resolution authorizing an amendment to zoning map to change the zoning designation of parcels N-44-078782 and N-44-078780 from RPUD to OS.
Call on Mr. Smeesing to provide the staff report.
This pertains to a request we received from the owner of the subject properties, which are located in the area referred to as Swift Run Estates, which is what it was previously platted as. There are some 260 acres in this, the two parcels involved here, that were previously platted well over a decade ago in anticipation of developing the area with residential units, hence the residential planned unit development zoning designation that exists today. The owner, the new owner of the property, I should say, is not interested in developing the properties and has asked that the zoning be changed to open space to better reflect the agricultural and wooded land characteristics. This is consistent with the recommendation for the land use designation found in the Planet Pickwa Conference of Plan, the conservation and development map, which indicates the characteristics of the land and the adjacency of the land to Swift Run Lake, make it desirable for conservation. So, here again, the planning commission conducted a public hearing to receive public comment and deliberate on this matter, and in doing so, the planning commission found that the change in the zoning designation of the parcels noted from RPUD to open space is warranted, and they recommended approval.
Okay, do we have any comments from the audience on this? The commission?
I move to adopt resolution R-47-19.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution R-47-19 passed. Now's the time of the meeting for public comment. You can address the commission regarding to agenda items, issues, or to provide information. Comments or requests are to be limited to five minutes, and specific questions should be addressed to the city manager's office.
Hi, my name is Jim Burkhardt. I live at 1003 West U Drive, and earlier this evening, you guys approved a resolution to go into a lease arrangement with Main Street Pickwa. This will be the sixth annual Down River Down of Beer. In the last five years, we've held it to lock nine, but with the construction going on that's planned, we wanted to move it, so it'll be behind the power plant this year. The format will be very similar. We'll have to make some adjustments in the river activities, and still looking for input on, from Mr. Paul Schneider, on how to ignite the river fire rings.
I'm willing to help, sir.
So, there'll be food, music, just like before. The venue is really nice. The building provides a really nice backdrop, and in the evening, early part of the evening, it'd be really nice and shaded, and looking upstream is spectacular view. It's really, really pretty. The group reflections will play, run from 6 to 10. The date is August 10th, so looking forward to that. Again, the format will be very similar. Wanted to give a little update on what we've done so far, so we've been able to contribute about $20,000 to Edison State Community College, the Upper Valley Career Center, and Powell for purchases of kayaks, paddles, PFDs. Primarily, Edison has indicated they want to use those for recreational opportunities, and the Upper Valley Career Center, with a grant from the O D H, received some water sampling equipment. So, they'll be out on the river with students checking the water quality and getting people out in the river. I think that's all I have to say, but thanks again for approving the use of the land behind the power plant.
Jeff Lang, again, just reiterating what Dr. Burkhardt said. Really exciting to have our youth in the area, our students from Upper Valley Career Center, and our students at Edison State Community College, with the support of their staff, taking on this new equipment and embracing the watershed here locally. Beyond just going down the river and pulling water samples, Miami Conservancy District has donated over $5,000 in water testing kits to UVCC for their environmental occupations. Folks, Edison State, as Jim said, going to be using it for recreation, but they're all excited about it. The previous two floats, they've taken down the Great Miami. You've never seen bigger smiles on kids in your life than what they are because they've never been on the river, and it was really exciting to see and be a part of it. So, I too want to thank the city for allowing us to have another Dar-Dab down there. I think it's going to be a great event, and it really does make me proud to be in Pickwa and helping out our local community and our kids, and they're getting out and enjoying nature and enjoying our beautiful river. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Bill Jacqua. I live at 607 North Sunset Drive, Pickwa, Ohio. And just a couple of issues, actually, there's three issues I can think I can sum up in about three minutes, but first of all, I want to say that I'm like that Supreme Court Justice. I love beer. I like beer, but I quit drinking because health reasons. So, I'm not against bars, I'm not against alcohol. That's not my point, my first point. But I just want to tell the commission that this thing that's happened on Main Street, this gunfire there last week or two weeks ago, has to stop. I've been complaining about this to the city commission for several years. I'm on the record, and I'm not going to get off the record until, until something's done. So, what the city has done since Tom Hudson was mayor, they started removing bars on Main Street that didn't want to be good citizens, and you guys have continued that work up until now, and Main Street is much safer, it's much nicer, and I think that will continue over the years, and so I would like to see something more concrete done. I think this gunfire in downtown Pickwa is out of bounds. It breeds a lot of drug traffic, and I would be glad to go over that. I can, was in the business for many years. I'd love to share that experience with you. As many of you know, that I was involved with it for a long time, never as a drug dealer, but around it. Second thing I want to talk about bars is we're opening up a new banquet facility in Springfield, and we're in the downtown area, and I met with the downtown people today, and what I thought was of real note was the fact that they have gone to the state of Ohio, and they have picked a section down there, and in this section downtown Springfield, liquor licenses are not issued on availability, they are issued on demand. So, if you have a reason, of course, you have to go through all the hoops. Either you qualify or you don't, and, but you don't, it's not, it's not, are you guys familiar with this? So, you know about this already. Okay, I think something you could do here, the second thing I want to talk about is the last, the last city commission with the restaurant, is that several people had contacted me and said, "Bill, could you help us?" And I said, "Well, you know, you have to help yourself, and I think there's two or three commissioners that probably would listen to you, but you need to make your own case. You need to go up, speak from the heart, and either they'll agree or they won't agree, but that's what you need to do. You need to lobby them. You need three votes and try to get them," and they said, "Okay, you know, I'm going to do that." And then Gary, you sent that thing out, you know, "I must speak out," and, you know, I mean, they said, "Are you kidding? You know, I can handle that. I've been in the public eye for a long time. You're not going to scare me." But those people, you scared right off, and they're just average citizens who are worried about their business, worried about their, and I have the, I have the text. If anybody wants to see them, I will show them in private, not in public, but I'm not lying to you, it's a fact, and I think you bullied them right out of, right out of here, and I think that's wrong. Thirdly, I want to talk about, about the general restaurant thing in general, and I think that, that, you know, I want to go back to Mr. Patrizio's days when Mark Rohr was here, and what happened then is that they were going to have it their way, and they're, by God, it was going to be our way or the highway, and so, you know, eventually they raised the rates on the utilities one time too many, and Rohr got ran out of town, of which Mr. Patrizio was part of. The second thing that I think Mr., if I'm wrong, correct me, I think the second thing that he unearthed during that time is there was a lot of shady dealing going on between the city manager and one of the city commission members, and Bob DeBross was a good friend of mine, and I used to meet him every night over to one more after every city commission meeting, and I would get to hear what all went on. And his heart was here, he loved the city, and I don't know exactly, you know, how that ended up in his life, but it wasn't good, and he made a mistake, and, but my point is, is that I don't know you, I don't know any of you, the citizens don't know you, and so things should be above board. You hand selected, you hand selected a restaurant. I think that could be challenged in court, not on my dime, I don't care. You know, I'm happy for the city of Pickwa, I'm going to say it again, I think you guys are doing a great job, I think there's a lot of good things to look forward to, and I think there needs some more, be some more balance, but this hand selecting of particular people, hand selecting restaurants, is wrong. I proved, you know, I was right the last time. It took me two years to make my point to you people. Two years I came up here and argued my case off and on, and finally Gary had to come in and apologize to him. He called me in with the law director and said, "Bill, I'm sorry. We were wrong, you were right." Okay, now, I'm right in this case, okay? I'm absolutely right what you guys did. The way you did it was wrong. You could have abided by state law and just like bid the thing out like everybody else, but you chose to use an ordinance, that's fine. You know, you have that, you didn't, I'm not suggesting you did anything illegal, but just because it's illegal doesn't mean that it's unethical, okay? So, I think it was questionable, the way you handled that, and why in the world you could have accomplished the same thing by putting it out in the public? I don't know why you guys don't want public opinion. You could have got the, you could have came to 10, 15 people just like me, and you could have did a request for public information, a request for proposal, and we could have given you more ideas than you'll ever come up with yourself. I mean, you know, and why you don't want that kind of input is, most people wonder why. A lot of people question that, and so that's really all I have to say about this issue at this point, and I just don't, I don't want to be misread. I'm, I'm support what you guys are doing, you're doing a good job, but I think you need to make some adjustments. I think needs, this, this behind closed doors thing is wrong. I think, you know, it needs to be out in the air. I think that's, that's inherent in our democracy, it's inherent in the way we run things, and the city of Pickwa is not, you know, just because we're not working in DC doesn't mean that those same principles don't apply right here in our city. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Could you clarify, you said that I apologized, could you clarify what I apologized for?
Well, I think what you did, you can, you and the city, city law director at that time can, can clarify it. Okay, so, you know, it was a public meeting, there has to be a record of that meeting. What you called me into that meeting for was the fact that our banquet, our banquet hall was hand selecting people who she wanted to be up there.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were clarifying, it was an employee act...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were clarifying, it was an employee action, not a selection of a restaurant or anything like that?
At that time, yes, sir.
Okay.
No. And you did the right thing, and I appreciate that, and I'm just, you know, I mean, I, I call the Ohio Ethics Commission at will, I call the Ohio Department of Health at will because I have their phone numbers, and they have to answer questions. It's not, you know, it's not multiple choice, they have to answer them. You guys can do, you know more about the ethic laws than anybody in this room, so I just think you guys need to pay attention to that more, so, thank you very much.
Okay, city manager's report is next. Yes, only one item tonight that I think is worth mentioning because I think it's pretty special. Congratulations to Corbin Paltier, who is one of our firefighters, for winning the Fire Department Instructors Conference Firefighter Combat Challenge. Corbin competed against professional firefighters from all across the nation and won the competition in Indianapolis, which is pretty amazing, so I think that speaks to the quality of employees and this particular case firefighters that we have. It's a pretty grueling challenge, and he, he did a fantastic job, and again, beat everyone in the nation, so we're very proud of that, and I thought it was worth mentioning tonight. That's all I have. Commissioner Lee?
I have no comments tonight.
Commissioner Short?
Well, I have two things. One, Mr. Jacqua, you brought up one of the topics I wanted to discuss, and that's about the shooting that occurred. I don't know the facts of the case, I, and that's none of my business at this particular point in time, but what I will say is, in, in looking at the news media and, and seeing the still shots and everything, I noticed that not only our agency, but several outside agencies came in to assist us. Those kinds of incidents happen all over the place. We're not immune from it, and unfortunately, I saw a lot of negativity that came out on Facebook about the city itself, and unfortunately, I think that's very unjustified. So I got a little upset about that, to be honest with you. On the reverse token, within a few days of that incident, we had a young lady that was missing from Pickwa Central School, and it went out on social media, and I was totally impressed with, by how many people went out to look for that little girl, and I think that is what this city is about, and how we came together as a community to find that little girl, and I think that's the positives that Pickwa offer, and we're going to have negative incidents, just like any other town does, but I think that really showed the positive side of Pickwa, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
Nothing tonight.
Well, I guess it's my turn, hasn't it? If I commented on what I had on my mind, the chief would take me to jail, so I do not have anything at this time.
Thank God.
So, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second it. Third.
Call for the vote.
Oh, God, Bill, Bill, Bill.